The regular council meeting to order for Monday, February 7th, 2022. If you would please silence your mobile devices, we appreciate everybody wearing their masks, or being vaccinated. Vaccinated, so. All right, if we will stand at this time, we are going to have a prayer, our pledge, and then if you would remain standing for a moment of silence. Heavenly Father, we ask you to let your inspiration proceed this council's action in all present here today. In your assistance, further us, so that in every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you, and so through you may reach its completion. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a moment of silence for one of the city's employees in our public works department, Bruce Pacula, who passed away recently. He leaves behind his wife Jody, children Brandon and Hannah, stepdaughter Gina, brothers and sisters, nieces and nephews, and his in-laws. We extend our deepest sympathies to his friends and family. It is a big loss to the city, losing Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. Timmaner. We'll begin with the roll call, please.
Mrs. Foglio?
Here.
Mr. Crawford?
Here.
Ms. Holman?
Present.
Mrs. Mills?
Here.
Ms. Haynes?
Here.
Mr. Spielman?
Here.
Mr. Roskovic?
Here.
Mr. Timmaner?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Welch?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no excuses this evening, because we're all, I mean, we have no one to excuse, because we're all here, and we have met the requirements of the sunshine law. Before we begin our meeting this evening, we have two presentations. Our first one will be a resolution honoring Koski Construction Company, who will be celebrating 100 years in business. And we appreciate Ms. Koski Nufer, I'm sorry, Sarah, for being with us this evening. We appreciate her joining us. And Ms. Haynes will present the resolution honoring Koski Construction for 100 years worth. You guys were keeping our streets smooth before they were even streets, probably.
I think they started with horses.
Yeah, maybe. They were paving them.
All right. I'd like to present this to Sarah, who's here on behalf of Koski Construction. It's a resolution honoring Koski Construction Company for celebrating 100 years in business. Whereas it has come to the attention of council and these public officials of City of Ashtria Bula, Ohio, that Koski Construction Company, previously located at 242 Center Street, and now located at 5841 Woodman Avenue, Ashtria Bula, Ohio, has been in business since November 28th, 1921. And whereas Frank E. Koski worked as a superintendent at TP Fitzgerald, and began renting paving and construction equipment, and hiring colleagues to perform odd jobs and ditch projects as early as 1919, before he purchased the company, now known as Koski Construction Company, which has remained a family-owned and operated business for four generations. And whereas Koski Construction Company is currently owned by Frank E. Koski Sr.'s grandchildren, siblings, Donald and Elizabeth Koski, and siblings David, Danielle, James Sheldon, Julie Hare, and Susan Hupp. And whereas many career employees spent 30 to 40 years with Koski Construction Company, and are considered by the Koski family members as the most critical and cherished assets of the business. And whereas throughout the span of 100 years, that's so crazy, 100 years, Koski Construction Company was instrumental in resurfacing most of the streets, and was involved with the construction of most of the water and sewer lines in the city of Ashtria Bula, including such recent projects as widening West 19th Street, the Spring Street Bridge, the Route 20 Viaduct. And whereas Koski Construction Company supported, made major contributions to community groups such as the Ashtria Bula Arts Center, Ashtria Bula Chamber of Commerce, Ashtria Bula County Builders Association, Ashtria Bula Foundation, Civic Develop Corporation, Growth Partnership for Ashtria Bula County, Leadership Ashtria Bula County, Ohio Contractors Association, United Way, and many local schools. Now therefore, be it resolved that this city council and these public officials of Ashtria Bula, Ohio, do hereby convey to Koski Construction Company our heartfelt appreciation, commendation on a century of reputable business, with best wishes for future years of continued dedication and service of Ashtria Bula.
Thank you. I don't envy you for having read all that, because, good job, Jane. 100 years is a very long time. When I was born, we were already six years into business. I named my first baby doll Koski Construction, because, of course, like, it's a very suitable name for a baby doll when you're two years old. This business has obviously been a huge part in my life, but I also feel like this community has been a big part of my family's life. So it's really, really been great just being brought back in, because I never in a million years thought I was going to be living here in 2001, when I graduated from high school. I was getting it out of here, and I didn't want to be here where everybody knew who I was and was in my business. But honestly, coming back, being part of the family business, and part of the community, has really been very special. And now with my two children rolling their eyes at me, they're going to get to do it too. So, thank you.
Did you want to get a picture, or did you get pictures?
Thank you very much, Ms. Jane. Thank you, Sarah. And you're welcome to, you're welcome to stay, but you're welcome to leave, so. Thank you for being here, though. Also, at this time, we are going to have Ms. Holman would like to read part of the proclamation declaring February as National Black History Month. So, Ms. Holman, you want to do it here, or, okay?
I'm sorry. It's all right.
Can you hear me? Okay. As Mr. President stated, it's a proclamation stating that February is National Black History Month. And this is simply an excerpt from the proclamation that has been granted from the state of Ohio and our federal government. So it is from the President's Office of the United States of America. Each February, National Black History Month serves as both a celebration and a powerful reminder that black history is American history. Black culture is American culture, and black stories are essential to the ongoing story of America, our faults, our struggles, our progress, and our aspirations. Shining a light on black history today is as important to understanding ourselves and growing stronger as a nation as it has ever been. That's why it's essential that we take time to celebrate the immeasurable contributions of black Americans, honor the legacies and achievements of generations past, reckon with centuries of injustice, and confront those injustices that still fester today. Our nation was founded on an idea that all of us are created equal and deserve to be treated with equal dignity throughout our lives. It is a promise we have never fully lived up to, but one that we have never, ever walked away from. The long shadows of slavery, Jim Crow, and redlining, and the blight of systemic racism that still diminishes our nation today, hold America back from reaching our full promise and potential. But by facing those tragedies openly and honestly, and working together as one people to deliver on America's promise of equity and dignity for all, we become a stronger nation, a more perfect version of ourselves. Across the generations, countless black Americans have demonstrated profound moral courage and resilience to help shape our nation for the better. Today, black Americans lead industries and movements for change, serve our communities and our nation at every level, and advance every field across the board, including arts and sciences, business and law, health and education, and many more. In the face of wounds and obstacles older than our nation itself, black Americans can be seen in every part of our society today, strengthening and uplifting all of America. As I mentioned today, this is only an excerpt from the proclamation. I encourage you all to look for the full version that is available. We can make it available for those who'd like to access it. Enjoy Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. And it's good to hear the proclamation read, important. Thank you very much for doing that. We will continue on with our meeting. Executive session, request?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a request for an executive session.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Haynes will second. This will be at the conclusion of our meeting to discuss personnel compensation?
Yes, Mr. President.
It'll be at the conclusion of our meeting. We will reconvene only to adjourn. No action will be taken. And Ms. Foglio, you would like to have counsel, and Ms. Cooper, if she is available?
Yes, Mr. President.
Ms. Cooper, will you be able to join us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. All in favor, or please call the roll on the executive session?
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes. And like I said, it'd be the counsel and Ms. Cooper. All right. After the executive session, we will only adjourn. We will begin tonight with the approval of some minutes.
I have the minutes from Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. The meeting of the Ashtria Bula City Council was called to order at 7:00 PM by Council President Roskovic. Counselor Mills offered the opening prayer, and the Pledge of Allegiance was recited. Members present were Ms. Haynes, Mr. Crawford, Ms. Holman, Mrs. Mills, and Mr. Roskovic. Officers present were Mr. Timmaner, Ms. Cooper, Ms. Welch, and Mrs. Sinski. Counselor Haynes moved to excuse Counselor Foglio and Vice President Spielman from the meeting. Counselor Crawford seconded.
Can I have, may I have a motion regarding the minutes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Spielman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crawford. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The minutes will be, stand by a seven to zero vote. Thank you. We will now continue on with the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several, several items to request. I guess, as we discussed in pre-council, I will run through them all, and then ask for a consent when I get before the last four, just because those are formal requests for tonight's agenda. And then I'll read the last four and ask for a consent on those, to place those on the agenda for our next meeting. Okay, thank you. The first group has to deal with memorandums of understandings with our city unions. We have completed negotiations, so these next, the three ordinances that are going to be voted on tonight, deal with those. The first is an ordinance to enter into a memorandum of understanding with three employee organizations existing collective bargaining agreements, extending them until December 31st, 2022. The next ordinance is to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the three unions for the purpose of modifying compensation sections of their respective collective bargaining agreements. And the last ordinance is to enter into memorandums of understandings with our three unions for the purpose of including Juneteenth as a compensated holiday in each one of the collective bargaining agreements. And although I kept on saying three unions, we actually have five collective bargaining agreements. We have one for the fire department. We actually have three in the police department for police officers, dispatchers, and lieutenants and new captains. Each one of those is an individual collective bargaining agreement. And then we have a collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI, our local 1197. The next two ordinances deal with our non-union employees, so I would like a repeal of the ordinance adopting, I'm sorry, the repeal ordinance 2019-128, which specifies the pay rates and other terms and conditions for employment of our non-union employees. And then I would like an ordinance adopting the new pay rates and other terms and conditions of employment for our non-union personnel. The next two ordinances are repeal and replace of ordinance 2021-24, which is the wages for the Ashtria Bula Municipal Court, and then an ordinance to authorize the new rates for compensation and salaries for the Ashtria Bula Municipal Court and Probate Division. The next two ordinance are repeal and replace of existing payroll ordinance 2021-127, which basically deals with all other city employees except for the finance director and any elected officials. And then an ordinance authorizing a new payroll ordinance for all of those said employees. And lastly, for this section of the consent agenda, I would like an ordinance to enter into change order number one, to a contract with Koski Construction, who you met earlier, for the Lake Avenue resurfacing project. This is actually a deduct. We didn't have as much subsurface work that needed to be done out there, and some quantities were lower than what was originally projected. So those funds will stay in the paving levy fund, that we can do a little bit more paving this year. As I mentioned in pre-council, this was part of an OPWC grant slash loan, so right now we're divvying up where that extras go back to. But the city, our, the monies that we paid out of pocket for that project, there will be some money coming back to that, which again, stays right in the levy fund, so that we continue to use those. Mr. President, I'd like a consent vote on all of those ordinances I just requested.
Could I, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda format for these first 10 items?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Haynes?
Second.
Second by Mr. Spielman. Is there any discussion?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. City Manager, in the wording, you referred to adopting other terms and conditions. What might those be?
For the non-union?
Or whichever one.
Okay, the, I think the ones with the...
Yes, it is non-union.
Okay, so for, for that particular one, what we did was recreated, I almost want to call it a handbook, but it lists out for all the non-union representatives, or all the non-union employees, it lists out what they get for sick time and compensation, vacation time, holidays. It's almost like a collective bargaining agreement, but it just, it spells out their benefits. Rather than just interlineating certain sections of that and bringing that to you for vote, we basically just repeal that whole packet and replace it with a new one. So although we're just modifying the compensation section and the sick time usage, which I mentioned earlier, it's cleaner just to throw the old one out and adopt a brand-new one, so we always know which one is current. So it's, the reason it says it like that is because we're repealing the whole thing and adding the whole thing back. But those are the only two sections that are changing in that document.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yeah.
And Ms. Holman, you probably got one when you first started here, this old, the past one. So I imagine that all the employees will get new ones if it's passed.
Right, yeah.
I was just trying to tease out the difference between wage increase versus new terms and conditions, and what those might be.
Yeah, yeah, so it's just, it's just a language thing, because we throw the whole one out and bring the new one back in. But the only things that have changed in that new document that I presented to you were the increments of usage of sick time and the wages themselves.
Okay, so we have a motion to handle these 10 items by consent agenda, all in a second. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? And now can we have a motion to add those consent items to our agenda this evening?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Spielman?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mills? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So those 10 items we added to our agenda this evening in consent agenda format.
So the next four are for the next meeting. You can vote on these after I read them off, or however way you want them to go. But the first one is an ordinance authorizing additional funds for the purchase of an aerial truck package from utility truck equipment, in the amount not to exceed $2,719 due to manufacturing price increases. This would bring the total expense of that purchase to $113,796. Funds for this additional expense will be taken from the PI Fund 412.
Could I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Foglio, second by Mr. Spielman, to add to the purchase. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with GPD Group of Youngstown, Ohio, for the purpose of providing engineering design and construction administration for the 2022 paving projects, in the amount not to exceed $98,804. Funding for this expense will be taken from the paving levy fund 212.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mr. Crawford. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter in an agreement with BSE Electrical Contractors here in Ashtria Bula, Ohio, for the purpose of replacing streetlights with LED fixtures and repairing damaged underground wiring, in the amount not to exceed $20,000 for labor and materials. NOPAC grant funding will be used for this project. The funds for this expense will be taken from PI Fund 412.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Foglio, and second by Ms. Holman. Any discussion?
Mr. President, just for the record, these are replacing streetlights along Park Avenue and some on Center Street.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
And lastly, I'd like an ordinance to enter into a community reinvestment area tax incentive agreement with Corey Nagle for a commercial tax abatement at 50% for 10 years, for the expansion of retail space within a commercial structure at 1569 Lair Drive, better known to all of us as Fat Sally's.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Foglio, and a second by Ms. Haynes. And as Mr. Timmaner stated, this has been approved by the Architectural Review Board, and I'm so glad that building is, has been saved. I mean, it's been there for years, and it's a historical building that we're saving, and now it's going to be growing, so that's nice. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Mr. President, that's all I have for my report.
Okay. And I, Mr. Timmaner, if I could add, I got, I have the agenda for Wednesday's Architectural Review Board meeting, and on their agenda is the demolition of the church on the corner of Lake Avenue and Fort Street, so I'm glad to see that. Going on the agenda, they'll approve the demolition, and then hopefully that will be gone, so, sadly, sadly, but it will be gone.
Right. Well, and again, as you, as you saw, it's making way for new development, and we're excited about that. And I say "we," that's my land bank hat that we put on at that point. As, as many of you know, I chair now the land bank organization, and we have decided to move the demolition up, so as soon as our contractor can get there, after all of the approvals and permits are pulled, there is some abatement that has to be done at that site as well. It's a large cost for that demolition that the land bank is taking on for this project, but I think the rewards at the end of it are going to be, I think it's going to be a wonderful project.
Anybody else have any, does anybody have anything for the manager?
Mr. Manager, I, Mr. President, I do. I got a lot of phone calls again during the storm, as you know, because I was texting you during the storm. Can you, I know this is probably, you know, just repeating, but can you explain to everybody how the roads get plowed?
Sure.
Because I had a lot of people who live on the side streets who complained that their streets didn't get plowed till Saturday, but I don't think they understand how the streets, you know, the main roads get plowed, like, like they did on Friday, but then, or Thursday night. But then we got hit with that second wave on Friday.
That's correct.
When they got to the secondary roads, we got hit with that second wave, and they had to go back out to the main roads, do the main roads again, then come back to the secondary roads, so they didn't get to the side streets till late Friday night or early Saturday morning, and everybody was upset.
Correct.
Because, you know, the side streets didn't get hit till almost Friday night, Saturday morning, so...
So we've had some, we've definitely had some big challenges this year, and that big challenge started with the 27-inch snow that fell. And, and one of the biggest challenges that we have, as, as you can see, getting around town, is there's nowhere to put the snow anymore. And so, as with this, with this last storm that came in and that second wave, you're absolutely right. We hit the mains, we started out really quick into the neighborhoods, we looked really good, all of a sudden, boom, we got that wave that just didn't stop. We had to pull everybody back out, so all those secondaries that we originally started on had to be hit all over again as well. You know, as, as we've said, our goal is to get to the roads within 24 hours of the, when it stops snowing. So that is our goal. We've, we've tried to stay on that, what throws us... What throws us way off, as I've said, is, you know, if we get those calls, well, this one's not plowed and that one's not plowed. I've basically told the guys, no more, we're not skipping around. We're going to stay on our routes within each ward and, and get those done. And what we usually have, we've had seven, we've, we've had seven pieces of equipment out. We've kept two on those mains, keeping those nice and clean. And we've put one plow in each ward. Once we get those mains cleaned, those other two get diverted and they can go out into any of the wards and start cleaning those up as well. We have had crews on, we brought them in early for that storm. The storm didn't hit till early that morning, so overnight they were getting things ready, they were doing pre-salt, all that fun stuff. So we had the crew, we've had the crews on 24/7, we had them out Saturday. So Saturday afternoon through 11 o'clock Sunday night was the only time we didn't have crews out there. And now we'll have crews on again during our night shift and day shift. And today we spent, or last night and today was time salting all the secondary roads and scraping more. So today you might have got some calls that the roads weren't plowed. Well, it's not that they weren't proud, it's now that that slush is bleak, breaking down and it's getting slushy. We're, we're starting to scrape those because the sun came out tonight. We're hoping to continue that through the neighborhoods, but also put some guys up here on Main Avenue to start the piles that are out here of snow. You know, we've got to open this up as much as we can for the businesses down here. Once we get done here, we'll go to Bridge Street and open those up. In the meantime, we're getting calls from our police department about intersections that are really bad where the snow is piled up. So we do divert away and try to get those pushed back as much as we can so you have a line of sight. But I think the snow is going to be around till about June before it all. Some of these piles that are out here, it's, you know, it, it's one thing to get four or five inches once a week or so. It's another thing to start with 27 and then roll right into six and then row right into another 12. And it's just, it's just piling up and piling up. And we've basically had one day of melt, today would have been the second day of melt. So we're hoping this week gives us a little reprieve because I think we're talking Friday is looking at more snow now for the weekend, so.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. We, and, and I just want to say, I, I get it. My neighbors look at me too because no, my road is not the first to get plowed of a secondary street. And it, I know it's difficult to navigate down. I know all of our neighbors have been out trying to clean mailboxes and everything like that. I know it's frustrating, but we have every available piece of equipment out there. And yes, I know there's a lot of rumors that all of our trucks broke down and this and that and the other. Yes, we have breakdowns, just like every other municipality has breakdowns and ODOT has breakdowns. Our maintenance department has done a wonderful job getting these trucks in and out. You know, it's been small things, belts, little issues with augers and spreaders. And then we've had leaf springs break, you know, where we've had to truck down for a couple of days that we've had to shop out. So yes, those things happen, our fleet is old. I'm looking forward to purchasing two trucks for next year that we're working right now. On getting those, those quotes in place to bring to you. But those builds are 10, 11 months out. And we were looking at forecasting in the budget and this was the year that we felt we could do that, so. Right now, we do have more equipment than people, so we were able to pull people from other departments throughout these storms. And again, very much appreciate our staff for, you know, we had the dog warden and inspectors out in plow trucks. Because they, they were, come from those areas, so everybody really helped out. Our engineer, Bill Jepson, was out there as well. So, you know, it, it's, we had guys from water pollution helping out and in motor maintenance. So everybody was chipping in, trying to get as much done as we can. But we, again, we know the frustration, but it's not because we're not working. It's, it's just 99 center lane miles of road. And we don't have the luxury like the townships of starting in neighborhoods. We have to do Route 20, we have to do Route 84, we have to do Route 531. Luckily, we finally signed, we signed an agreement a couple of years ago to not do Route 11. Or that would be one truck dedicated to Route 11 for the entirety of a storm. We have an agreement with ODOT where we take truck wash from their Seven Hills facility and they plow Route 11. But we used to have to plow Route 11 as well. And with our equipment, Route 11 and even Route 20, you know, it, it's not quick to do those things, so. I totally understand the frustration. I'm sorry you guys get all the phone calls. Again, please, people call, call me, call my office, we'll, we'll, we'll get to it, we'll give you the updates as we can. I try to keep the Facebook updated as much as we can when, when we're out there too. And as Ms. Mills knows, this weekend, we had, the alleys are just, they're getting tighter and tighter because you have fences and garages and everything. So we actually had to bring a bucket and a loader and trucks in there and haul stuff out this weekend. Because it's just, there's, there's nowhere to put it anymore, so.
Mr. Manager, I did get calls after that and they were all gracious thank yous.
That's good.
They did a lot of work, we had pictures going back and forth. The alley is, and if you're not familiar with Ward 4, take a ride around, there's numerous. I went through every single one on Sunday. And then afterwards, everything was all clear. But it's one lane and there's like fences on every side. I kind of got wedged in there myself going through there. The job that they do is, and I had a plow truck. And I couldn't hardly get through. Your guys are amazing, so thank you, and they did a good job. People were worried, could we get out for work on Monday or, you know, to the doctors or EMS or whatever? You know, it, they want to park and want to remind folks too, when you have the parking ban. Because then I drove through some areas and then your, your plows can't clean the roads. So it makes it hard.
Yeah, the parking ban basically, and, and we put that out this time, when, when we have three inches of snow, the parking ban automatically goes into effect. People wonder, well, when is it off? Well, when we get down your street, then you can park on it, is, is basically the rule of thumb. You know, the parking ban just doesn't, not end, it, it wants, well, the, the rule of thumb for us is. If the road's been plowed and you don't have a big pile going around your car, you're, you're good. So, and we, like you get, like I said, our goal is 24 hours. I know we, we have not hit that, especially in the 27-inch storm. I think it took us about 36, closer to 40 hours before we had everything cleaned up there. And this one took us a little bit extra time too.
Mr. President, I just want to remind everyone out there, the fire hydrants, that you do want to unbury them. When I've driven by, so, I mean, you see just a little red dot on the top. So this is something that is the property owner's responsibility. So I just think with all the snow and maybe sketchy heating sources, that it's a good idea to have those uncovered. And I did want to ask the manager, you had mentioned something in an email about cleaning out the water basins to, to prevent flooding. So I think that's going to be the next disaster is flooding. And I, I just wanted you to address that here as well.
Yeah, so we have been going around and opening up and, and when we get these times where the snow gets a little bit soft and, and is melting. We've been pushing those areas back to the curb as much as we can and opening up those catch basins. Especially in problem areas where we know there's not enough adequate drainage. We've been trying to open those up, such as underneath the underpasses here. Water tends to find its way to those sources. And of course, there is a little bit of heat coming out of those basins just because it's insulated underground. But yeah, at nighttime and then during the day, when we're not actually plowing the snow or then, of course, filling the potholes. We try to push those back as far as we can. And I know, we know we have a lot of work to do on pushing roads back right now.
So is there any words of wisdom for homeowners of anything they can do preemptively to prevent flooding?
Well, again, I, I think that's, the flooding that we're concerned about is not for people's basements, but the actual roadway itself and flooding and then freezing. So it's just, I mean, if there's a way to, if you know there's a catch basin out there and you can kind of make a little path to it, we would, we would love it. But again, as we, as we said, as that snow melts, it kind of gets underneath there and, and finds its way to those catch basins. But we're doing our best to try to get around and just push that stuff back. Get as much salt down as we can so it opens up the bottom of those piles.
Okay, thank you.
Catch basins, you're talking like the drains on the curb.
Drains on the curves.
Okay, thanks.
Another thing that we have seen with the new high-efficiency hot water tanks and heaters with the small PVC pipes that come out of the side of your house. Because of drifting and because there has been so much snow, there's a tendency sometimes for that to accumulate in those areas. So if you do have those on the side of your house, check those areas, make sure there's adequate ventilation around there. Because that could cause carbon monoxide to back up in your home if those are blocked.
Yeah, I lost heat the, the first time because my vent got covered and then it shuts, it's like a safety feature. And I lost all my heat, so. But, but just, when you scoop the snow up off like Main Street, where do you dump it then?
Anywhere we can.
Oh, I...
Yeah, so there's been times where, you know, if there's a spot, we can push it down the hill, over the gulf, we'll do that. At the, at Bridge Street, we'd actually take it down to Walnut Beach, so then it just dissipates into, into the surface there. Parking lots, you see our parking lot out here. We can get into the parking lot, we'll do that. We're just, you know, really, right now, it's anywhere we can. You see the piles, ACMC's piles are, I almost want to put a ski lift out there and charge admission. But that would actually be pretty fun, how high those, those piles are right now, so.
Anything else for the manager? Ms. Cooper, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do not have a report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Ms. Welch?
I do not have a report this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. And Ms. Sensky?
I do, I put in the agenda, just what I've been spending so far in our legislative budget. Mostly just dues in the travel and training, but we do have some travel and training that the new counselors may choose to attend. I know Ms. Mills wanted to, I didn't hear back from anybody else if they wanted to. Everybody's welcome to attend. Professional services, and I'm going to, there's, this is the biggest expense in my budget is with Walter Drain. We'll have those quarterly updates of the codified ordinances. I'm expecting to have one here soon, maybe the next meeting, hopefully. And then, of course, the Civic Clerk bill comes out of that fund. And Assure Vault, which is where we have our microfilm legislation and minutes stored on microfilm. And then just operating expenses are the office supplies and your business cards that I gave you today. So I just wanted to go through that with you a little bit, so you're knowledgeable. The seminars that are available for this, from OML, I think Ms. Mills is going to the March 26th at Rockside, yep?
Yes.
Yeah. And we have until March 22nd to register. So if anybody else was wanting to go, please let me know as soon as you can. It's $75 each, which would come out of our travel fund, travel and training fund. They supply you with a PDF book called Municipal Government in Ohio. You can order the hard copy for $25 if, if you would want to do that. And since the question was raised about travel and training and Rule 25 in our chart, or in our council rules, talks about the training. And then in our codified ordinances, we have codified ordinance, Chapter 15714, which talks about travel, lodging, and meal allowances. So today, I also gave everybody a copy of the actual travel policy from the Finance Department. And then they have requisition forms that you would need to fill out if you end up doing something with travel or training. So I want to provide you with those so that if, if you decide that you want to do something, there is a little bit of a protocol before we can just go on our merry way. Okay, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sensky. We do have some committee, community development. Ms. Mills? You, you, you have a meeting scheduled this, tomorrow afternoon?
Tomorrow, tomorrow at 4:00. And Peggy Sensky from Signature Health will be our key speaker.
Okay. Finance and personnel, Ms. Foglio?
Yes, we have a meeting, oh, I'm sorry, yes, we have a meeting scheduled for, it would be February 8th, no, yes. February 18th at 8:30.
Okay, very good. And Mr. Crawford, you have a public reports, a Public Works report to give us this evening?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
We had a Public Works Committee meeting on January 24th. At the meeting, we actually, it was basically a snapshot so that all the new committee members could actually get to see and put a face with all department heads. So we had all the department heads and Mr. Timmoner introduced them and then he let them run through a rundown of their departments, so. In quick, Mr. Melnick was here from, let me make sure I get his right title. All right, what was his title?
Public Services Superintendent.
There, Public Services Superintendent. On his go-through, he actually said that all the plow trucks had been repaired and they were all back in service. As we've heard before, the adways are a big problem for the large trucks to get down just because of the space and how tight it is for them. There was a question about potholes. And in the summer months, we use a hot mix, which is better, in the winter is a cold mix. So if they do take the time to fill a hole, a lot of times, a little bit of water gets underneath it, it's going to pop right back out. And the plow's trucks are going to create another hole. But they do try to fill them in the winter months just so people don't get anything done with their cars. We did talk about the streetlights that was brought up today that were going to be voted on for Park Avenue to get those switched over to LED. Along with that, if I remember, we did vote, I believe it was last year, for the lights in the city. So if any of the lights go bad, they're replacing with LEDs. If you see a light out, if it's a one single light, if you could go to the city's website, there is a portal that'll bring you to First Energy. So we can get those lights replaced. The city still pays for those, even if they're off, so we need those to be on. Night crew, when they're not plowing, they were actually, or moving snow to clear up everything. They will actually start going around and those, you'll see a pink van or a ribbon tied around it. Those are trees that they've, or poles they've identified that are bad. And then they send that master list to CEI or First Energy to get the lights replaced. So you will start to see LED lights pop up around the city. So you'll see the mercury, you'll see the sodium, and then you're going to see the LED. But the LED is what we're trying to get the whole city over to. Example of that is right here on Collins Boulevard, that's that bright white light you could see. So that's what we're trying to get to. The two international trucks that were being repaired, the first one got, you got back, the second one was sent back out.
The first one is, the first one is out right now. The, they are doing, they're working on it. There is a shortage of ECMs in the country. And of course, our ECM is shot on the truck that's out there, so it's a matter of time before that comes in. We're hoping to have it back next week.
And then the second truck, we're believing is, might be the exact same issue for the second, but we have to wait till the one gets back.
But we've done some work on it internally and we think it's okay.
Got it fixed, so you won't... So that was the update on the two internationals. They are in the process of the 2022 paving. As Mr. Timmoner mentioned, three streets they were looking at is Union Avenue, West 13th, and East 23rd Street. The initial cost analysis was over a million roughly for those three roads because they are so long. Especially the Union and West 13th Street are a long run. There was, the Ohio Department of Transportation wants to repave Route 84 from Austenberg Road at Bunker Hill to the railroad tracks. That's not included in the, it's not, the city doesn't consider that one of the worst spots. As you probably all saw, Route 20 on the west side of the town and how bad it's chewed up in front of the old Stombas or Cardolis. City thinks that's a better road to actually get fixed instead of 84. Because the city has taken pretty good care of 84 and when there is a pothole, they've got it. So that's something that they're trying to work out. Because the money that we would, the city would have to throw into that's about $180,000 to $200,000 on a projected. So when you take that amount out of our roughly $800,000 this year, that's chewing up a lot of the streets that we are in desperate need. That the city does need to get replaced, that the residents have been dealing with for quite a while. There was a question asked about Walnut Beach from the churn to go into the parking lot to go straight down behind the brake walls, about could that be paved? They can't because of the structure of the material there. So as you freeze, the water comes over, it would just break anything that the city put down there. So what the city does actually do, and you've seen through the years, they take grindings and actually spread that out or they'll use the grader and knock off. But it's still through the season, the chuckles get there and they just, it happens, it's the way because it's nature and down there. There is quotes for a new Public Works trucks are forthcoming, they're in that process. Was looking at two other types of trucks, or makes we'll say. The other thing is, there are the six houses that are on the Ohio Avenue extension that will be tied into the city's sewer system. And that expense will be funded by the Ohio Public Works Commission. And that's, they were like grandfather, they were actually still septic systems. And now the city will actually have that put in so that they will actually feed into our sewer systems. After that, Mr. Pierce came up from the waste treatment facility. And he went over and gave an overview of the whole process and how it works so that the new committee members could understand how it works. so that the, uh, new committee members could understand how that process works. Uh, for all of you, he has still extended, any of you would like to go tour the plant, you could just get ahold of him, and him and Mark would love to show you around the plant, it's very interesting to actually see. Not now, it's really cold down there, but not do it in the middle of summer when, yeah, you don't want to be around the area anyway, so. There's a window in there, but it is a fascinating place, and they're very, very, you could see the pride they take in their plant, and how they actually know it, and how they want you to understand it, and so it's very nice and interesting to see down there. Uh, they did talk about, of how the sewer systems we do work, that there is sensors to report when the sanitary, sanitary, sanitaries overflow. That's the things we've talked about, and everyone's heard that EPA doesn't like that. In the past, it was dilution is the solution to pollution. Now they want two separate systems. So we actually have sensors when they sense it, they actually then can go out to those areas and monitor and see what's going on. One big issue the city does know and see is that there is downspouts from certain areas, that they are putting the downspouts off the roofs, and they're going into the sewer system. We actually have, uh, city codified ordinance that that is not allowed. It's hard for the city to go out and say, hey, let's check it, because you actually are pumping gas into the sewer systems on a whole area to see where you start having smoke signals on everyone. We know they're out there to identify them, but then the costs associated with that, and it's something that we're dealing with, but we want people to be mindful not to do it, so. They also said that any issues with stormwater runoff should be reported directly to Public Works Department. Uh, last was, uh, Mr. Verselli. Uh, he actually did, I liked all his report, he was actually, he broke his down to an update of what's been going on at the plant, and then actually what things they have coming up. So as you all know, we've had the bar rake was out for quite a while, and it took all that time for it to be repaired. It is in the installation stages now with O'Hara.
Uh, actually, I think tonight's legislation is actually allowing me to enter all those contracts.
Right, so that'll actually get that in, so that is actually a safety feature to protect the plant. It grabs the solids before anything gets into the plant, so that's something that'll be a nice improvement, because right now, the guys are going out there and actually doing that and cleaning that, and it'll help alleviate having a guy have to go out there and clean off that screens and that. Uh, they have been upgrading their tunnel lights, so that's something I never knew was down there, but there is tunnels all through that plant down there, so you could see those if you go on the tour. So they are replacing those. Uh, they are replacing, uh, deteriorating wires and conduits. They are doing painting, interior buildings, and labeling piping. Uh, working in the raw and primary buildings is underway. They rebuilt the flame arrester. They rebuilt pressure regulators, they have installed dip traps into the methane, so they've done a lot to improve that system to keep it maintained. Uh, they have replaced the sodium illuminate lines. So that was... What was, Mr. Timonier, was metal lines, they've replaced those over to PVC.
Galvanized.
Galvanized, they were galvanized lines, so that's how old they were, and they've switched them over to PVC. So that should give a lot longer life on those. Uh, they are replacing the blower buildings drain lines. So they're doing actually a lot down there, it's pretty impressive what they're in. There is discussions and options for the centrifuge bowls to actually, for re-selling them out to be repaired and balanced, because of the cost to buy a new one, and it's an important fixture that they need down there. The plant administration building roof is to be replaced, the contract was awarded last year, and it'll actually, work will be commenced in this year. Uh, the digesters building roof was damaged in one of the recent storms. They are working with the insurance company on getting the price to have the buildings damaged repaired. They're looking at utilizing funds in a five-oh-four to cover the remaining portion of the roof, so that they just have the whole new roof would be done at one time. So that's, uh, trying to kill two birds with one stone. Uh, the collection system, there was the stuff they've done there, the EQ station. It's the one that's, it's working on replacing the basin level sensors and replacing the EQ pump. That is the one that is behind Dollar General.
Yep.
It's behind Dollar General, so when you're on Lake Avenue, you go down east, uh, west... Seventeenth, is it? Yeah, you go down there, and that's actually where that EQ, uh, station is down there. Uh, they've been doing Bridge and Morton Pump Stations, uh, some of the pumps have been out, they're actually having those rebuilt. So they're actually doing pretty well, there's been other systems of panel box replacements needed. Morton, uh, Eight Twenty-Six Morton, it needs, say, roller pins in the roller rack and the climber screen to be fixed. So they're gonna install it where it actually had lube points in it, so that it'll actually have a longer duration as it goes forward on the improvements of that. The one thing, did they purchase the lateral push camera, or is that something they're looking?
Something we're looking at.
That was, sorry, that was, so actually, they could use that push camera to go down different lines and actually see what the interior lines look like, and they could snap pictures and have a photo reference for later on, so that's something they're looking at. They are still continuing to send the samples to be tested for the RNA fragments, and that's every two weeks?
I think it's every week.
Is every week, so they are still doing that to see, and as Ms. Timonier said, we could see that when that number goes up, they start seeing cases, so it's a pretty equal one-to-one, when one something, you know, happens, the other one's gonna happen too. Uh, there is the PRD study that's currently going on, that should be wrapping up.
We're hoping to have some results in March.
Right, so in March, that'll actually be the whole study, they actually got lucky, they said, was we had a lot of rainfall, so they were actually able to get good flow data through the lines, so they weren't just sitting being stagnant, they were actually, actually get good data to actually use. So that'll be coming up, and that's gonna show a lot of issues and a lot of problems that the city's gonna have to deal with. So then at that point, Mr. Timonier and his team could actually get a plan together and see what they need to work on to improve the system and keep it maintained. Uh, the other option, or other issue that the waste pollution control down there has is they have a hard time getting Class One operators, or any level of operators. That's actually a course that anyone that's interested, it's not a glorious, when you tell someone you'll be working with sewage, but it's a very high demand, those are very easy license and to get, that Class One. Just takes a little bit of studying, and you could actually then pretty much be secured for a job that you're needed into, most municipalities need those, so. If anyone's looking for a job, that's a good place to go to actually get that course. And that was about it, it was a long meeting, but I thought it was very helpful for...
As it was, thank you very much.
Right, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I, I just wanted everybody to have a face, so that when they hear John, they know who John is, and so, and, but they did a great job, all of the three guys did very well of explaining their process, and where they are, and where they want to be, and so it was a good one, so, thank you, Mr. Timonier, for having the guys come in and
Thank you.
Explain to us.
We have a very good team. One, one thing that has come up since our meeting, and, and you're gonna start to see us push some information out there about this, and you might even see it nationally. Um, we even know of some municipalities that have some lawsuits going on about this. Um, we are having a really, really difficult time with the quote-unquote flushable wipes that people are buying all the time now. We get called to a lot of these pump stations, hey, there's something going on. Um, we pull these pumps out of there, and these things are just jammed up in our impellers. Uh, they're hurting our pumps, they're hurting our systems, they're causing, uh, clogs in the system. Uh, we've had a couple of calls where, you know, my sewer's backing up. We go out there, we check the main, main's in, flowing, everything's good. Get that camera going up a lateral, or they'll call us, and, uh, you know, uh, the road rooters of the world, or the gearmen of the world will call and say, nope, it's in their lateral, they've got a jam of the disposable flushable wipes. They really are not degrading, or doing what they're advertised as they're supposed to do when they get in our lines, and they're causing a lot of issues. Um, these pumps, if they burn out, you're talking six to seven thousand dollars to replace. Um, and most of these, with everything that's been going on with supply chain, are not just sitting on the shelf somewhere. They're specific pumps to our systems and our pump stations, uh, and we're having some real, real issues with that, so. Uh, we're gonna start putting some literature out there and just some, um, tell us something we don't know, I guess you'd say, information, um, to try to really, uh, prevent people from using these, but if they, I guess if people do use them, find a different way to dispose of them, other down, other than down your, uh, your sanitary pipes, I don't know what that might be, or what that might look like. But, um, yeah, the flushable wipes are not doing our system or anyone's municipal systems any, any good.
Mr. President, I, I have a question. Um, in regard, you said that Route Eighty-four was not going to be done, but Route Twenty is?
No, 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 we would like them to do.
Yeah, so we have not made any decisions on this, we're actually still waiting for the, oh, for ODOT to get back to us. They were supposed to send some information so that I could bring this to council for a participation ordinance. You guys have to, uh, agree to a participation ordinance anytime they come forward with this. That price tag of one eighty-eight was when they first estimated this project, I think in two thousand and seventeen or eighteen, when we told them, no, the road is in no condition that it needs to be, uh, redone, because at that time, we had just paved, um, from Austenberg Road down to Jefferson, Jefferson Road, I think we paved that whole stretch. And then we also paved West Forty-sixth Street. In what they're proposing right now is from Austenberg Road to the railroad tracks. Nothing along Collins Boulevard, which is the worst section of that road. Nothing over the Viadoc, or over the Spring Street Bridge. Uh, west, I'm sorry, East Forty-sixth Street that goes to State Road then. Um, we had just paved that within the last three or four years, five years, so that road is in good condition. And then a small section within the city of State Road heading towards, uh, what we know as Route Eighty-four, that then goes to the freeway. Those estimates of the one eighty-eight were from back then, when they did that, we know those prices have changed. Um, and the road rating, um, has not changed much at all since that was done, so we have been encouraging them that if we don't do this one, here is, you need to really go out and take another look at Route Twenty from West Avenue to the city limits, uh, west to the city limits, it is in terrible shape. And Route Five Thirty-One from Kent State to Lake Avenue. And then, uh, Bridge Street's not bad, but once you start getting on the other side of the lift bridge, more towards Columbus Avenue, heading out towards the city limits to the east, there's some areas there that, that need to be done, actually, probably the intersection of Columbus Avenue, uh, east needs to be, needs some attention. Still waiting on them to come back and say, um, yeah, we, we're gonna hold off on this for a little longer, and we're gonna replace it with this. Um, it doesn't mean that we, you know, lose any money or anything like that, it just extends the project timeline a little bit. Um, but again, that would be a decision that council would have to make.
Okay, I, I have questions.
Sure.
So what, so the Route, you're just asking them, instead of doing Eighty-four, to do Twenty?
Yes.
Am I understanding that?
Yes, mhm.
So what if they say no, then, then what happens?
Then we just get pushed off to another year.
So then we don't, I just don't want to lose that eighty percent pay.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be any different than when you told me to tell them not to do it last time. We didn't lose anything. We just, we just go into a different round. It's just like when, when they skipped it the last time, when they came out and said, yeah, you guys are right, the road is in really good shape, we wouldn't be doing much out here. So it's just, the project just gets pushed. But yeah, it is our intention with that, and actually, we're doing the engineering for them, for Route Twenty and for, uh, Five Thirty-One, just so we can say, you know, they don't have the excuse of coming back and saying, well, we have to engineer it, we have to do this, no, we're saying here, we've already done that for you.
What I remember from when this was proposed before is that another project was more pressing, but that didn't get done. So that, I guess that's, that's what I'm concerned about.
We didn't have another project back then.
Well, that's not what you said to me, but that's fine.
No, we didn't, the only other project we've ever done was Route Twenty, but that wasn't, that wasn't even being considered when when ODOT came along and said they were doing that other project. I mean, we internally have other projects to do with that, with what our share would be, absolutely.
Yeah, it's just, it's the eighty percent, having that paid for. I don't, I don't, I don't want to lose it. That's all.
Well, like I said, it's, it's not, the, the road still will eventually have to be done, and ODOT contributes eighty percent towards it, when the road gets done, with all of the state routes that come through here.
Mr. Manager, can I ask, do they ever split anything up, like the area? You come across the Spring Street Bridge, that state road, like to the tracks? And you know, there's lots of semis through there, lots of complaints, it, that little stretch is horrendous, so I don't know, do they ever do, like, you're working somewhere else, but then you just... Do they ever parcel, parcel it up, like we do a little chunk, or?
That is part of what they're, that would be a section that they would plan to repave.
Okay.
In this whole... When, when they come in, they basically say, okay, Route Eighty-four, which through the city, we call it different names of streets, but it's still considered Route Eighty-four, and that's why they participate. Uh, or that's why we're forced to participate with it. Um, but, like I said, it's from Austenberg Road all the way down to the tracks here at Maine, it does not include the worst section of Collins Boulevard. Uh, it does not include anything over the Spring Street Bridge, it does not include West, East Forty-sixth Street. Um, and then it picks up once it heads to the south on State Road over the tracks into the city limits, and then I think it even does a little bit in the township. Of course, they cover a hundred percent of the township.
Mr. President, so it, is that something that we could say, can you include Collins Bol, I mean, how is this negotiated?
It's not part of the project because it's concrete. That's why we tried to get...
That's something that will never be a part of the project, then?
Um, what we've tried to do is the same thing we did with that stretch of Route Twenty, we've tried to get the, um, small cities grant funding, we've been turned down the last two times for Collins Boulevard, but Collins Boulevard alone was about nine hundred thousand dollars, and that's why we were trying for small cities funding to get it.
So, so that ODOT will never pay for that, that's what I'm understanding you say?
That's what they're telling us, because it's concrete, it has to be all ripped up. Now, the reason that we ripped up all that concrete out there on Route Twenty, got the small cities grant funding to do so, you know, paid a little out of pocket, had the grants to pay for the rest of it, but now that it's asphalt, it will always be included in the eighty percent match. Once we turn Collins Boulevard into asphalt, it will always be included in their eighty percent match. They have, we have a lot, not only the city of Ashtria, but a lot of municipalities have been lobbying them, saying, wait a minute, these are state routes, they're in concrete, there's no reason you shouldn't include them, just like you include everything else. But if you recall, this was all put in in urban development, so they didn't have anything to do with that design. But that's been sixties, seventies, that, that concrete's been out there. It's bad.
Seventies, yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Timonier, thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Mr. Crawford, um, and Ms. Holman and Mrs. Mills, did you folks decide on those letters? Are there any changes that you needed?
No recommended changes on my part.
Okay, don't, we'll get those sent out.
And we, we talked before, so, yeah, it's good.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
For the rest of council, what the letter was, we actually, I wanted to have the new calendar committee members introduced to Mr. Potts and the city uh, schools, just so he has, they know who the fresh faces are, and so that was the letter we're gonna actually send out to them, and did we say Kent State? And were we doing St. John also? Because they are part of the Jets, so they're, yeah, so all three of the schools that are inside the, or affected with the city, just so they know who everybody is.
Our new members. Good, good idea.
Thanks, Stacy.
Uh, Mr. Spillman?
We are scheduled to meet Monday, February twenty-eighth at eight forty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Spillman. All right, we've come to the legislative part of our agenda, anyone in the audience, uh, uh, who would like to comment on any part of our, uh, legislation tonight may do so at this time. We have quite a bit of legislation, uh, to install equipment at the water treatment plant, the engineering for the Ohio Avenue Extension, the NOPEC Energize Community Grant, and then, um, repeal and replace the park board ordinance, re-dealing with their, uh, meeting dates and their, uh, membership. Repill and replace, uh, a second part of the park board ordinance. Three, uh, MOUs for three employer organizations, MOU for three, to modify, uh, some of our compensation with these organizations. Uh, MOU regarding the, uh, inclusion of the Juneteenth holiday. Uh, really, repealing and replacing several payroll ordinances regarding the non-unions, the courts, the health department, and then finally, a construction change order for the Lake Avenue project. Anyone like to discuss any of those, or comment on any of those? I see no one.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Is it, is it now that I should discuss? Oh, no, this is, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Nope, no, not now.
Yeah, no, no.
Sorry. I just don't want to miss my chance.
That's okay. No one in the audience would like to comment on those? Okay, we will have a motion to, we have items A A through Q. Okay? And so, uh, there's been a request to handle this, these items in consent agenda format with the exception, I believe, of items M, N. I think M and N, any, anymore?
Yeah, that's it, M and N.
Just those two, M and M? Okay, right?
I think that's it, yeah.
Not the singer, just these two. Okay. All right, so, can I have a motion to handle tonight's agenda, A through L, and O through Q?
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion to handle items A through L and O to Q.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Foglio and a second by Ms. Mills, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we will handle these, these items in consent agenda format by a seven to zero vote. Okay, Ms. Sensky, would you like to read A through L and Q through, zero through Q?
O through Q, yes.
O through Q, yeah.
Ordinance number twenty-two-two-oh-six, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with AP Ojoro Company in an amount not to exceed two hundred and four thousand eight hundred dollars for the purpose of installing a mechanical bar screen and screenings, washing, and compacting base bid plus alternate two hand-pull slide gates, two each. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-oh-seven, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with GPD Group for the purpose of providing engineering design and construction administration services for the Ohio Avenue Extension Sanitary Sewer Project in an amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-oh-eight, an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept a Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council NOPEC Energize Community Grant. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-oh-nine, an ordinance repealing existing codified ordinance section one-seventy-four-oh-four for the purpose of enacting replacement legislation regulating the selection of officers for the City Parks and Recreation Board. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-ten, an ordinance enacting new codified ordinance section one-seventy-four-oh-four regulating the selection of officers for the City Parks and Recreation Board. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-eleven, an ordinance repealing existing codified ordinance sections one-seventy-four-oh-five for the purpose of enacting replacement legislation regulating the meetings, rules, records, quorum for the City Parks and Recreation Board. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-twelve, an ordinance enacting new codified ordinance section one-seventy-four-oh-five regulating the meetings, rules, records, quorum for the City Parks and Recreation Board. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a memoranda of understanding with three employee organizations extending existing collective bargaining agreements until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-fourteen, an ordinance authorizing the city manager into, to enter into a memoranda of understanding with three employee organizations for the purpose of modifying the compensation section of their respective collective bargaining agreements. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-fifteen, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into memoranda of an understanding with three employee organizations for the purpose of including Juneteenth as a compensated holiday, in the collective barg, bargaining agreements. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-sixteen, an ordinance repealing, yes, repealing in its entirety, ordinance number twenty-nineteen-one-twenty-eight, pay rates and other terms and conditions of employment for current non-union personnel employed by the city of Ashtria, for the purpose of granting a wage incre, wage increase and adopting other terms and conditions of employment for non-union employees. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-seventeen, an ordinance approving and adopting pay rates and other terms and conditions of employment for current non-union personnel employed by the city of Ashtria. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-twenty, an ordinance repealing in its entirety payroll ordinance number twenty-two-one-one-twenty-seven for the purpose of granting a wage increase to employees of the city of Ashtria and the Ashtria City Health District, excluding the finance director and elected officials. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing compensation salaries and wages to employees of the city of Ashtria and the Ashtria City Health District. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into change order number one to a contract with Koski Construction Company for the purpose of resurfacing Lake Avenue.
Can I have a motion to waive the reading of items A through L and O, P, and Q?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Spillman, second by Ms. Foglio. All in favor of waiving, waiving the entire reading of the legislation?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will do so by a seven to zero vote. May I have a motion to waive the charter requirements of two readings?
So moved.
Second.
All right, who was the second?
Me.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Spillman moved, Ms. Foglio second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Spillman?
Yes.
And Mr. Roskovic's.
Yes, so we will waive the reading by a seven to zero, two readings by seven to zero vote. And now on the outcome, uh, the, uh, adoption?
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Spillman?
Yes.
And Mr. Roskovic's.
Yes, so items A through L, O, P, and Q have passed by a seven to zero vote. Now we will go back and uh, we will have, we have two ordinances left, M and N. How many people were impressed, I knew that was a singer. Pretty good for an old guy, huh?
I was gonna use that for tell us something we didn't know. I was gonna have you, see if you could name a song.
I probably couldn't name a song, but I, I know he was a singer. Okay, um, can I have a motion? Oh, wait, can you uh, read us M and M?
I'll try to wrap it out. Um, ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-eighteen, an ordinance repealing in its entirety payroll ordinance number twenty-two-one-dash-twenty-four for the purpose of granting a wage increase to employees of the Ashtria Municipal Court and Probation Division. And then ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-nineteen, an ordinance authorizing compensation salaries and wages to employees of the Ashtria City Municipal Court and Probation Divisions.
Can I have a motion to waive the reading of those legislative items in their entirety?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Spillman?
Second.
Second by Ms. Holman to waive the readings? Any discussion?
Yes.
On waiving the readings?
No.
Okay. All right, any discussion on waiving the readings? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the readings by a seven to zero vote. Now can I have a motion to waive the charter requirements for two reading of the legislation?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Spillman, second by Ms. Holman to waive the requirements for two readings. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Is it my time?
Right ahead, yeah.
Finally. Okay, well, I just, I, you know, sometimes I think it's better to keep my mouth shut, but tonight, I just, I, I can't. And, and I know there's nothing that we can do about this, but I just have to bring some things up about this court payroll. First off, I was looking at it, and all the other city employees and non-union employees are going to get three percent. But when I looked at this, um, and I started to do some figuring with my little calculator, like I always do, um, I noticed that, um, we start with the court administrator, I'm not gonna go through every one of them because this is all written in code, and it's really hard to, to decipher who's getting what. But the court administrator, um, got a five percent raise. But on, if you notice on the second page of this journal entry, the court administrator then gets a thousand dollars biannually to be paid out of the court's special projects fund, which I understand why that is, which gives her a ten percent raise for the year. Then we go down to the supervisor deputy clerk who gets a three percent raise. Now, the court administrator got five percent, but this deputy clerk gets three percent. But then on the second page of our little, little entry here, she gets fifteen hundred dollars uh, the end of January. So that gives her an eight percent raise. We go down to the next person who's the supervisor civil clerk, and I could only calculate what she's getting, which is a five percent raise, cause I don't know who she is, I know who the other people are. She's probably somewhere on this sheet, I just don't know who she is. So we get a ten percent raise, an eight percent raise, and a five percent raise. Then we go down the page, I don't know, I, I can't decipher who's what. But we have three deputy clerks listed on here, and I won't, I won't give their names, but they get a three percent raise. But then they're on the next page getting more money, so I can't tell how, how much of a raise they're getting, probably around five, six percent. So, you know, Ms. Holman brings up, we're giving people raises, and what do they, what do they have to do? Do we know what they're doing for five percent, ten percent, eight percent? No, we don't. They're getting extra money, and the judge can do this, I know she can do this, I know, we, we've fought this before. But, but what are they doing for this extra money? Then we go down to our security guards. Now, we all remember, you guys weren't on council at the time, but we all remember the Dollar Security Guard debacle of last year, which we fought and lost. But if you go down here, our two security guards, the, it must be the lesser of the two security guards is gonna get four hundred and sixteen dollars quarterly this year. That's one thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars he's gonna get paid this year, extra, on top of his three percent. Then the other security guard, who must be the more senior of them, is gonna get six hundred and twenty-four dollars quarterly, which is two thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars. A dollar and twenty-two cent raise. Now, she used, she used the uh, excuse last year that they had to take temperatures and give out masks. Okay, we don't have to do that anymore. So why are they getting all this money? I don't know. So, you know, it, I, I have to complain, and then she wants thirty thousand dollars for server upgrades. You know, I, I guess she's, she can ask for that too. That's selfish and irresponsible, but that's just my opinion. Everybody got three percent in the city. Yet we see all these people on here getting thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars. That to me is irresponsible, and I'm not gonna vote for that. So that's, that's my two cents for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Foglio. Are there any other comments from any counselors?
Comments or questions or either?
Either one, yeah, yeah.
So how do we take up what the counsel Foglio just brought up? Or do we, how do we take it up for discussion, or do we?
She wants to know how we take it up for discussion.
How you take it up for discussion? I don't, I don't know how that would happen. We had things last year, uh, with the court, once in a while, they were voted down. But eventually, because the court is its, and you clarify here when I'm wrong, it's its own entity, and it controls its own budget, even though they were voted down by council, it came back, and then we eventually ended up having to approve it. And, you know, to go along with the, uh, the guidelines that are set. Um, so, um, I suppose, um, you know, if you feel strongly about it, as Ms. Foglio does, and you wanna vote no on it, that's certainly an option. Um, and then I think it would go back um, to the court, who would then probably bring it back to us. Ms. Cooper?
Mr. President, the problem is this was presented to you as a journal entry. So the court has ordered this.
Right.
So the council, and it's not unusual for courts to do, when push comes to shove, it's not unusual for courts to journalize their budgets. Most of the time, they try and negotiate the budget with the authority that has the money. And then if an agreement can't be reached, the court just says, this is what I need, and this is what you need to give me, and this is why. And because you are statutorily required to fund the municipal court, you have to give them the money they need to run in a reasonable manner. The option is for her to order it, you to appeal it, and then eventually, a higher court to decide whether these are reasonable expenses of the operation of the court. I don't mean to be cynical, but you can guess how many times a higher court has overturned a lower court giving funds to a court. Uh, it's, it's rare, unless it's just something completely out of the ordinary.
And, and, thank you, Ms. Cooper. And, and the, you saying all that reminded us, those of us that were here, remind, brought us back to last spring, summer, whenever it was. And that was explained to us then also that, you know, we could, we could have our say, we could vote no, but it's gonna go to a court. They'll bring it to a court, the court will approve it. I think at the time, correct me, Mr. Franklin even tried to work, set up like a, um, what, what do I wanna say, set up like a-
Mediation.
Mediation, thank you. And that went, uh, you know, didn't go far either, so. So Ms. Holman, to answer your question, you know, that, um, there's really not much we can do. I mean, you know, you can, we can make a statement and vote no, those that wanna do that can do that. But in the end, uh, this is probably, um, going to occur.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Ms. Holman, uh, this is what I stand on, the city's checkbook. I always watch, I always watch it, I always do my figures, I always watch it, and this is what I stand on. So that's why I brought this up. I always watch, I always watch the court, I always watch the city's checkbook. So that's why I brought this up. I know there's really, I know, Ms. Cooper, I know there's nothing, really nothing we can do. But I always bring it up to let everybody know that I'm watching, so don't, 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 don't try and get it past me, cause it's not going to get past me. So, I mean, I guess that's why I brought it up. I just wanna bring it to everybody's attention that, that she's spending money, you know, just, it's just, it's awful, it's heinous, but, you know, it's not getting past me. And, and I'm not gonna vote for it. That's just the way it is.
John, may I, real quick?
Go right ahead.
Uh, so, I, I think, I don't wanna speak for Kim. I think what we can do is educate, like Kim just did. We could tell people where the money's being spent, how it's being spent, how we think it's being spent unfairly. And then come election time, it's up to the people whether they want the same judge or a different judge.
Exactly.
So like, every year we could do this, we're gonna lose.
Right.
But we can educate folks, and then come time to, you know, voting time, they can make their own decision, so. That's what I'm gonna do at least, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spillman. Is there anybody else would like to comment, make any comments? All right, seeing none, we have a motion, uh, in a second to, uh, vote on two readings, uh, waiving the reading of, the two readings of this legislation, M and N. Will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Foglio?
No.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
I need some support on procedure, can I abstain, or do I have to? I can't.
I don't, you, you usually abstain only when you're personally involved, and so I wouldn't imagine an abstention would be, um, what were it appropriate or allowable in this situation?
This, this is to waive the reading right now, right? Or is this on pass?
The waiving the two readings.
Okay, so this, this is, this is to waive the two readings we're voting on right now.
So you were yes, Ms. Holman, thank you.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Spillman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic's?
Yes, so we will waive the two readings by a six to one vote, and now we will vote on the adoption of the legislation?
Correct, Mrs. Foglio?
No.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Now can I abstain?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Spillman?
So if it's, if it's a four to three passage, it doesn't take place for thirty days, right? And if it's a five to two, it takes effect immediately. What's the vote at right now?
Three to two.
Yes.
So you're voting yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Roskovic's?
Yes. So that item has passed by a five to two vote. Okay. All right, very good. Is there any, um, and I think that, I think that's the end of our legislative part. Is there any, um, and I think that, I think that's the end of our legislative part. Okay, any unfinished business this evening? Any new business?
Just a minute, Mr. President. You could go pretty fast.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, as I brought up at the last council meeting, um, I've been asking the question, um, what do we do about the proclamation, um, naming racism a public health issue?
Yes.
And, um, it seems still to be unfinished because it's been unaddressed. And as I said before, I applaud the council for adopting the resolution last year.
Yeah.
It's an important issue. However, how do we move to action and do something about it more than just in word and name?
Well, I did, did you send that email to me or everybody? The one I asked, um, I can't remember. Did I ask?
I mean, I, I sent the email to everybody at some point, and then you asked for it again and I sent it to you.
Okay. So there, there was, uh, information about what, uh, communities around the state are doing, and I, uh, we had had it before, and then I asked Ms. Sensky to resend it to me to see where we can go from this. You know, I've read everything from some, we're setting up, um, like committees, a task force to deal with some, to study this idea, um, and some other more specific things. So, um, maybe we could, um, have that shared with everybody again. I apologize. But, um, you know, like I said, they, they, I've seen everything from, uh, you know, one group is studying a task force to see how it applies to each community individually. Some were taking a more general approach. But, um, certainly, and I think I shared with you in the email, certainly this is something we wanna discuss, um, you and I, we can get together, we could bring it to a committee, um, but certainly that's something we, we, I agree, moving forward with. And, and I, um, I appreciate you for bringing it up and, uh, keeping us on task with this because, you know, as you see from council, we do tend to get distracted and, and buried in other ideas, but that's certainly a good idea. But I'll have, uh, Ms. Sensky send that to everybody and maybe you could read over to and see.
I'd be glad to.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask Ms. Holman a question?
Go right ahead, yeah.
What is it you, you would like to see added or changed or?
How about?
How do you wanna see this changed?
How about this in the short term?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask, um, maybe in your capacity with the city schools, is, are there things that you are implementing within the school district that would be good ideas for us to implement across the city? Or are those two totally different?
I would imagine there is some overlap, but I don't know enough about municipalities.
Well, I'm, I guess, I guess the reason I ask is if this is something that you are implementing with, um, or if there are things being, I'm not, I'm not, uh, up on what, what's happening with the schools there, but if there are things that you're doing in your position there, um, that the children, the, our students are learning about, it seems to me it would be a good thing for us to try to implement that citywide so that parents know what's going on. So I'll give an example. I know this is a really bad example, but it's the first one that comes to my head. When we were implementing recycling, we went to the schools and talked about recycling because we knew the kids were gonna take that information home to their parents, and then when we implemented recycling around the community, the parents had been hearing about it because the kids were learning about it and, and it kicked off really well. So I guess I'm kind of correlating those two things. If the kids are learning about it, is there something we can do citywide that then the parents get involved in that also with the programs that are being developed within the schools that have to do with diversity? So maybe that's something you and I or you and the president can sit down and talk about, hey, here's what you're looking at with the school district. Maybe those are things we can adopt and, and mirror so that, um, it also brings the unity between us and the school district as well.
I, I appreciate that, and a, and a colleague sent me some literature, um, about advancing racial equity in your city.
I'd love to see it, thank you.
So I would certainly, you know, share it with us. At least we can get a conversation going and then move to a plan of action and do more than pay it lip, lip service.
Yeah.
Because racism, um, unbeknownst to most people, doesn't just affect, you know, people of color or disenfranchised, racism affects the entire community on every level.
And, and I think that's, uh, thank you, Ms. Holman, for, like I said, keeping this in our, our discussion in form, because we did pass it last year, it sort of sat on the shelf. So this is good, and like I said, if you have information to share, Mr. Timmonier, myself, we could bring it to the school, Public Works and the School Committee, and that may be a good point to start with something, you know. And I, I think I also emailed you about, you know, when I first came to council years, uh, a couple of years back, one of the things that I thought I had read about was, you know, getting city graduates to go to Kent State for free. And, and that sort of gained no traction. I had one or two people said, that's a, you know, good idea. But then I see it happening, like in Painesville, uh, and I see happening some of it in Cleveland, and so maybe that's time we could look at that again, you know, so, um, you know, government's slow, you know, and, uh, but we will keep, we'll keep at it, I think, so thank you.
I hope so, because if we're sincere about changing Ashdabula for the better, I think it's imperative for us to begin to look at these issues that really are hampering our individual and our collective growth and development.
I agree. Thank you very much. Mr. Spielman?
Did we, have we talked about from the Safety Forces Committee, the programs that Chief Still helped implement with minority recruiting and hiring for the police and fire department? I don't think we talked, I, I think it was probably before you came on council. Chief Still, at our next Safety Forces, could you come to the next Safety Forces Committee?
It depends on what it is. If it's a morning meeting, I can attend because I'm at work.
Maybe, maybe next Safety Forces, if you could give us a quick recap on that, that whole program, Chief Still. If you're not able to attend, I'll have, I'll have good notes and at the next meeting I could bring it up again. It's just not fresh enough in my brain to speak intelligently about it right now, but, I mean, it's a, it's a good pro, and, I mean, Chief Still gets the credit for that, but, I mean, it's a good program, uh, I, from what I see, um, but we'll talk about that at next Safety Forces. Then we'll come back.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I just wanna say a shout out to Healthy Vibes. It's a new smoothie place right across the street from here, so I've been there, it's yummy. I know Jody's been there, um, but anytime there's a new downtown business, I get really
And I, I saw on Facebook, they have, uh, healthy donuts.
And I've, I've eaten three of them.
Have you really?
And I'm skinnier.
That would be concerning. These are healthy. Very good, Ms. Okay. All right, very good. Does anybody else have anything for tell us something we don't know?
Mr. President, I do. Oh, go ahead. Um, in 1992, Pope John Paul proclaimed February 11th World Day for the Sick, and at 7 o'clock this Friday at Our Lady of Peace Parish, um, we are going to have a, a mass for the sick. Ashdabula County Medical Center, our health department, and nursing homes have been invited and the public is invited. Anyone who feels that they need anointing or healing is invited to our mass at 7 o'clock.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mills?
Um, yes, Mr. President. Um, I was just gonna remind folks that the, um, Ram USA is coming again this year. Um, I know Mr. Tucker is big with that and it's free dental vision and medical services. I think last year it was at the mall. Was it at the mall last year?
Yes.
So this, this year it's at Lakeside on April 2nd and 3rd, that's Saturday and Sunday. So, um, it's a pop-up vision, eye exams, glaucoma testing, classes are made on site, dental has fillings, cleanings, extractions, they have medical, general, women's health and more, no ID, first come, first served. You can visit ramusa.org or call 865-579-1530. So it's, it's a good program. I know I'll be there all three days. The setup is Friday. You can also go on here to volunteer, um, and they need help on Saturday when you work on Sunday and then you'll tear down and, I don't know, probably for the, Mr. Tucker, do you have anything else you think we should know?
Oh, we just need volunteers.
So anybody who wants to volunteer, you can go to that site and sign up. They'll take whatever time you, you can give, so it's a good program, pass the word. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mills.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would just say of the, of the Ram Clinic, um, of all the volunteering I've done over the years, that was probably the most rewarding, uh, personally, um, just to see people that, needed that help and being able to get that, the sort of medical or, or vision or dental help that they've been suffering with for so long. It was, it's, it's such a wonderful asset, uh, that this community keeps embracing and keeps having into the community, so, uh, there are a lot of people that attend it, so do get there early if you're, if you're looking for services, but, uh, if you're looking for something to volunteer for, um, this is, is more than worthwhile, worth your time to, to get. I, I signed up for a couple hours, I ended up staying for the entire day and coming back the next day, uh, just to fill in where I could. Um, but it's, it's, it's amazing, uh, the people that come out to support this, the doctors, the nurses, the chiropractors, the health departments, um, everybody working together, um, and it, it's just amazing to see this operation and, and that people are getting help that they need.
Anybody else have something?
Yes, um, it sort of segues into the work that this, is it R-A-M? R-A-N? Ram?
Ram.
Ram does, um, and our Ashdabula Community Action partnered with Ashdabula Area City Schools, and they have what they call a Dragon Empowerment Center, and it provides dental, medical, lots of services to our students and families. Well, they also have a program called Guest on Deck where they have guest readers read children's books that air live on Facebook on the Dragon, Dragon Empowerment Center. And this month for Black History Month, a number of readers are choosing their favorite children's book that has a theme connected with black history and they're reading it. So I just want to applaud them for taking the initiative to have readers come because literacy is really important. We'll find that a lot of the reasons that we have families in poverty is because they had limited literacy skills. So I wanna, um, make it known that the Dragon Empowerment Center has readers every Tuesday and Thursday starting at 7:30. So if you have little ones or grandchildren or nieces and nephews, have them sign on and hear a children's book and improve their literacy skills.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. Mr. Crawford?
Uh, just wanna remind everyone that currently right now, the Ashdabula Little League is doing signups. Uh, you could go, all signups are gonna be done online this year, so if you go to www.AshdabulaLittleLeague.com, it redirects you to, I believe it's Blue Sombrero. Uh, there's a link in there you could click on. Uh, they're having their tryouts for this year, and I know the snow's still out there, but it's March 19th at St. John's School, and that flyer is actually on their website too. So Ashdabula Little League, and let's get the kids out there and let them start playing this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Is there anything else for tell us something we don't know? Can somebody name an Eminem song? Because I really don't. Jim, you, you said you knew one. Do you know one?
Lose Yourself.
What is it?
Lose Yourself.
Lose Yourself? No, no. I'm gonna, I have to check your word for it.